Good evening and welcome. My name is Adam Robertson, President and CEO of CERA, and we're happy to have you here at the CERA Center for the Arts this evening. We're especially grateful to have all of you here in the audience, and this will be recorded and put on the city's website as well, so you can review it there. Behind this kind of bulgy curtain here is a big set, The Hunchback of Notre Dame. So please come back and check out this wonderful show. It goes through October 4th. Coming right up after that is our Theater for Young Audience show of the true story of The Three Little Pigs. It's a popular children's book. It's our Theater for Young Audience, and we encourage you to come back and see that again. We've got 14 wonderful events for our indoor season, and some great movies, and of course, lots of arts education programs. There's lots of great things here at the CERA, and we encourage you all to get involved in some way. We're certainly happy to host this evening, of course, with our partners and friends from the Utah Valley Chamber of Commerce. To start this evening, would you please all rise with me, and we'll say the Pledge of Please repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Our host tonight, again, the Utah Valley Chamber of Commerce, and our lead moderator is Curtis Blair. He's an entrepreneur, businessman, executive leader. He's guided many companies, many multimillion-dollar success companies, international marketing firm from zero to 15 million in six years until its exit in 2019. Since 2020, he has served as the Utah Valley Chamber of Commerce President and CEO, and he's, of course, collaborated with many of the Utah Valley's leading businesses and community partners. He's a BYU Humanities graduate. Curtis has conducted business in 14 countries and serves on multiple boards, including the UVU Wolverine Club and Utah Lake Authority. A triathlete and golfer, Curtis and his wife Lisa are the proud parents of five. Please welcome Curtis Blair.
Thank you for that, Adam, and a special thanks to CERA. They've been partnering with us on this event for the last several years, and I often joke with Adam J. Robertson. I call him Adam J., because when we met just under five years ago, I wondered how it was that in my career I hadn't crossed paths with him before that. And now, we speak probably every 10 days, and we partner on so many wonderful things, not the least of which is our love and appreciation for the arts. You might recall that one of our beloved members of our community, Jeanette Herbert, Gary Herbert's wife, who sits on the CERA board, introduced the word "steam" to complement STEM. And you might know what that "A" stands for. It stands for the arts. And we stand behind the arts community and Adam J. and all the work that they do for our community. A round of applause for Adam and the work they do here at CERA. Let me introduce Harvey Scott, who's at my left here at the moderating table. Harvey is currently the Chair of the Board at Utah Valley Chamber of Commerce, and it has been a delight to serve and work with him there. He is the Chief Development Officer at Redmond, Inc., so the next time you, you know, put a little salt, we hope that it's a Redmond brand on it. It comes from Redmond, Utah, homegrown, good product. Previously, Harvey served on several executive roles, including Executive VP at Plentec, right down here in Orem, just off of Geneva Road. He was the Director of International Trade and Diplomacy at GOEO, the Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity. Earlier in his career, he served as VP of Corporate Development and M&amp;A at Rolls-Royce. It was probably the last time before tonight that he wore a button-down shirt. So he works a farm. He is in the trenches of good work at Redmond, Inc. Boy, lots of degrees, a smart bloke. We're happy to have him help moderate this debate today. Mr. Scott, married and the father of five children. Harvey and his wife live on their family farm in Genoa. Help me thank Harvey Scott for his service here tonight. Okay. That's all right. I'm going to introduce Janice, who just sat down here with us, and I've got one piece of paper that'll help me do that. Okay, Janice, are you a resident here in Orem as well, and your business is technically in Orem? She is the CEO of Squire &amp; Company, a leading Utah-based CPA firm. Since joining the CPA firm in 1999, she has driven strategic growth, founding the QuickBooks consulting team, and advancing Squire as a leader in accounting technology. Magna cum laude at BYU. She has a BS and a Master's of Accounting degrees from the same institution, BYU. She joined AICPA majors firm group. She was named Utah Business Magazine's CEO of the Year in 2020 and also included in the Forbes Top 200 CPA. I got to tell you, knowing Janice as well as I do, I think she's probably more popular outside of Utah than she is in Utah, especially when she goes to trade industry events and is well-known amongst the accounting industry. Passionate about supporting women in accounting, she emphasizes mentorship, professional development, and Squire's value of personal connection. And help me join and thank Janice for serving with us this night. Okay. All right, so our format is going to...oh, let me do a couple of housekeeping things. We want every person here tonight to really come away with a positive experience and a greater appreciation for civic service. It is not lost on me, and those that are here, and probably you as well, the emotional and physical effort and investment that it takes to run for office. And I have a greater appreciation and a deeper understanding of the ideas, the ideals, and the positions that are taken from our leaders. And this is what America is all about. This is becoming America by seeing this process and preserving and protecting the unalienable rights that we enjoy as citizens. And so, number one, we just hope everyone comes away with a positive experience. Number two, this is not a campaign rally. Outbursts will not be tolerated. If so, you will be escorted out for uncivil behavior. I hope that doesn't happen. It hasn't happened yet in any of the times that I've moderated a debate. If you wish to show your support for or against an opinion, you may indicate that with a thumbs up or a thumbs down.
Which we can't.
That's the only finger you should be using on your hand. There will be time to meet and mingle with the candidates afterwards, and so, you know, that might be the best time for you to approach a candidate about your input, thoughts, feedback. We have some first-time delegates here tonight, so let's show them the best of what our county and this legislative process can offer the citizens of this great country. So, you know, rather than any personal attacks, let's focus on the issues, the vision that they have for the city, and the policies that they see help, best helps implement their vision. The moderators, we have the right to reserve, we reserve the right to move a discussion forward if it seems too repetitive or off-topic. And with that, we'll begin. Does that sound good? Okay. All right, so the format will go like this. Each of our candidates will have a one-minute opening statement. Harvey, to my left, has a 15-second sign that he'll wave when their time is nearing a minute, and then we'll then work our way into the debate questions. The questions that we fielded come from both our residents and our business community. And we received twice as many questions from the residents as we did from the business, and I think we'll take the questions in that ratio. We'll have two questions for everyone that come from the residents and one that come from the business community, and we'll kind of rotate that, two-in-one ratio. And then, at the end, we'll give each of our candidates a 90-second opportunity to offer their closing statements. Okay? Harvey will keep time. Janice, Harvey and I will rotate questions back and forth, and with that, I'm going to lead out the first question, and this question is for each of you to answer. You would have seen this in your packet, but it's an important question.
Are we doing it? David, you first.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We're going to do the...yeah, sorry. We're going to do the opening statements, yes. Thank you, David. Thank you. And then we'll jump into that first question. David, please take us away. Your one-minute opening statement. Hello?
Is it? Okay.
Yep, you're good.
Let me put my glasses on. Don't start the clock. Good evening, thank you for coming. Appreciate Adam and Curtis in the chamber for organizing this event. I'm David Spencer, and I'm honored to be running for reelection to the Orem City Council. I first ran to protect youth sports and stop a large tax increase. Ever since, I've built a reputation as a council member neighbors can call when there's a problem to solve. Whether adding a stop sign to protect children walking to school, helping a family keep their property from the city, or standing up to stop 10,000 apartments on State Street, I show up and I listen, and I get results. Working together, we have accomplished big things: a new city center, expanded water storage, new parks, and no new taxes, less debt. Orem is Family City USA, and my commitment is to keep it safe, affordable, and family-friendly for the next generation. I am David Spencer and ask for your support and vote. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Do you want me to stand, Curtis?
I think you should.
Stand?
Yeah.
Well, thank you. I'd like to thank the chamber and the CERA for hosting this event tonight, and I want to thank you all for coming. This is where it all happens. This is where the rubber hits the road. It's very important for our community that you're here, and your engagement in this election will truly determine the future for Orem. I've lived in Orem for over 35 years. My husband Ken and I have raised our five children here, and like many of you, we have loved the sense of community, the schools, the neighborhoods that Orem provides for our families. I believe deeply in giving back, and for the past 25 years, I've served our schools and I volunteered on several Orem commissions. I decided to run for city council four years ago when I saw apartments overtaking our city and neighborhoods going unprotected, and residents' voices, mine included, being unheard. I wanted Orem families to have a seat at the table and a council member who would be available, who would work hard, and would be responsive to residents. For the past four years, it has been my honor to serve as your city councilwoman. I love this city, its neighborhoods, its families, its people. My goal has always been simple: to listen, to serve, and to help build a bright future for Orem with you. Thank you, and enjoy tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Linnae.
Hi, good evening. I am Angela Molten, and again, I am so thankful for this opportunity. This is my first time running for city council, and I am just so thankful for the opportunity to be able to go and meet people at their homes, their neighborhoods, and to walk the streets, and that's just been a great experience for me to learn more about our amazing city. So my husband and I moved to Orem in 1996, so next summer will be 30 years for us, and we moved into an apartment right behind Parks, Sports Goodman, Sports, whatever that was called. We could see the parking lot right there. And we had our kids here, and when we went to go buy a house, we looked from Lehigh to Eagle Mountain all the way down to Santaquin, and we just kept coming back to Orem, kept coming back to Orem. Like, we just could not find another place that compared to Orem. And we are just so thankful for the opportunity, and I want to be able to continue this vision that we have and what my kids were able to experience, and to be able to also make sure that our future generations have the same experience that my kids were able to have. Thank you.
I'm Doyle Mortimer. This has been a truly remarkable experience for me to be back running for office again after over 30 years. When Tom McDonald decided not to run for city council, having retired, having conquered cancer, and having the time to serve, I decided that my experience could have helped to Orem City. And as I have visited with many of you in your homes and at your doors, even more now today, I think I can help represent Orem. I'd like to say one thing that I said at the Meet the Candidate night several months ago, and that is, you have wonderful candidates here, every one. Great people who have a lot to offer and have offered. The important thing tonight is to listen to what resonates with you and what you agree with, and vote for those people to support in the election. Thank you.
Thank you, Doyle.
Hello, hello, everyone. My name is Crystal Muehlstein. My family and I have lived in Orem for 13 years. We have, my husband and I have three children, and we have loved Orem. It's been the best place. I have spent most of my time here, as we've lived here in Orem, serving in our community in different capacities. I have been on PTAs, SCCs, school community councils. I've been serving in my neighborhood. I've been serving on the Utah County Republican Party, and I've formed a lot of really great relationships with legislators and city council members and people at the city level, and I just want to keep serving our community. I love where we live, and we are blessed to live here. And we don't keep, we can't keep Orem the great place it is without a lot of hard work, and I'm willing to do that work. I used to be a surgical assistant for an oral surgeon, and he recently retired, which has opened up my schedule, and I'm grateful for that because I have the time to put into this job to serve you as a community, and I ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal.
Hey, everyone, it's so fun to have a chance to be with you tonight. Really grateful to our hosts. My name is Quinn Meekum. Orem has just given so much to me and to my family. Our lives would be less meaningful, our friendships would be less profound, our quality of life would be lower if we lived anywhere else. I'm running for city council as a way of just giving back to the city as much as I can. My purpose, both personally and professionally, is to build strong communities. I believe in transparency and fiscal responsibility, that we absolutely owe it to our future generations, our children and our grandchildren, to make wise, long-term investments. We've got to make decisions as a full community, not just as city leaders, and to do that, we must listen to everyone, build bridges between people who disagree, and be ever-innovative in finding solutions to our challenges. We really need to focus on Orem's traditional values of trust, of mutual respect, and genuine collaboration to become the community that I know we can be. I will champion our neighborhoods, our agriculture and green spaces, and make Orem a place where everyone feels like home.
Quinn, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Well job. Well done, I mean, and a great job. And I'm not Nate Bargatze, and so I'm not going to give you points for going over or under, and I'm not donating 100 grand, but I do have waters behind me, and I will use them as currency. So, okay. All right, thank you. That was awesome. First question, and this is a question that I'd like each of you to respond, and we will start in the order of the ballot, and that, in fact, if I recall, I mean, look at my, in fact, we're seated in order of the ballot, and so Quinn, this will come to you first, and then David, you'll be last. So a little pressure on both of you to anchor this question, and it's really two parts. The first question, part of this is, what is the single most important pressing issue in Orem? You have to pick one. And then, number two, to back that comment up or that answer, is, do you have a signature project or initiative that you would like to champion if you're elected? What's the single most important or pressing issue facing Orem today, and do you have an initiative that would address that? And you have one minute.
Thanks very much, Curtis. We, as a city, are in this really interesting time where we have to make choices about growth and development. We have to make choices of how we're going to position ourselves versus other cities around us while preserving all of the things we need to preserve, including our neighborhoods. And we have big choices ahead of us. The signature initiative that I would suggest we begin to implement in order to make those choices as wisely as possible is I would love to see a citizen advisory commission that is randomly selected every year, that serves once a month to come and weigh in on Orem's choices and be an ongoing focus group of residents who represent all aspects of the city so that we can make sure we get perspectives from everyone in the city as we make those important decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Quinn. Well done. Well said. Okay, Crystal.
Had we had this debate, you know, two weeks ago, I think my answer would have been very different, but I think that the single biggest issue that's facing Orem is that a lot of the craziness of the world is coming into our own city here. We live in a great place, but we are not immune to the effects of the world and what the world wants to happen. We had a tragedy here with the Charlie Kirk assassination not too long ago, and then today, there was another hard thing that happened in my own neighborhood, that affects my own neighborhood. And so, I think shoring up our community and creating community connection with one another, helping other people to feel that they belong, that they are loved, that their voice has a place, is probably the best thing that we can do. And figuring out how, as a city, we can make sure that residents know that they are valued and that their opinion matters, and make sure that we listen to and respect all voices is probably the best thing that we can do.
Thank you. Thank you. Doyle.
Thank you very much. As I have talked to the citizens, they want to protect Family City USA, and it seems that their most concerning issues right now, of course, are high-density housing and traffic, and that's a big concern to them. And I will try to address those things as very much as I can, but a basic foundation of that is that we need to protect the income that this city has coming in. So much of it is sales tax, and we need to protect our revenues, especially as we look at traffic and other things, and plan for the future. One thing that I think I can do with my business background is help us to examine budgets and plan for the future so that we protect Orem City.
Okay. Thank you, Doyle. Okay, Angela.
So I want to echo Crystal what she said. Number one thing I think that we're feeling right now is divisiveness in many of our communities and in our lives, and making sure that we have people that can bring them together. And as a teacher, junior high kids, I've worked with all different types of people. I've worked in all kinds of situations, and that's a skill that I've been able to develop, to be able to bring people together, to collaborate, and to find common ground, to be able to work with people that I don't even, that I, you know, don't even agree with, but to be able to find that and to be respectful in that way. The second thing I was going to talk about also is what Doyle talked about, and that is protecting our sales tax base. That's where the majority of our budget comes from, and we've got to make sure that as our, Orem used to be the only deal in town, you know, a big deal here, and as other cities are developing, they're having businesses also come in, and so people are staying in their communities, and that sales tax, we've got to make sure that we are still getting people to want to come to Orem to pay, to buy things.
Thank you, Angela. Okay, next is Linnae.
Okay, so I think really, I've been on the council for four years, and what I have seen from Orem's biggest pressing is growth, really. We are really struggling with growth that's around us and growth in our city. More accurately, let's say, the management of growth. Growth can be a good thing if we manage it well and responsibly, but left unchecked, it can hurt our neighborhoods, it can hurt our infrastructure, and our quality of life. So over the past four years, we've taken some important steps to kind of stop that growth. But when I came into office, there was a zoning on State Street that allowed 10,000 high-density apartments to be built on State Street. We returned that to commercial infrastructure. That's our economic engine. That's how we provide our budget, our dollars for our budget, so your property taxes stay low, and we don't have to raise taxes on you. So I'm running for a second term to continue those types of decisions. What project? I would say the My Hometown Initiative. When I ran for city council four years ago, my two main goals were to protect neighborhoods and to strengthen our Orem families, and I've kept that promise. And I feel like one of the things that has come to our community that I've championed is the My Hometown Initiative. As a city council liaison, it helped to launch that partnership, and what it does is it uplifts and supports families in our neighborhoods, and you'll learn more about that, I think, later on.
Yes. Thank you, Linnae. Okay, David.
Yeah, I think the number one thing is high density on State Street. I was the one that did the moratorium to take the 10,000 apartments off State Street because, as Linnae said, that is our economic engine. We live on sales tax, and the mall in 13 South, that is 42% of our sales tax. So we need to make sure that engine is running, so we don't want high density, high rises on State Street. And then, when that, if that comes, then plus or minus chance it's going to come down State Street, it's going to ruin businesses. Also, I think my pet project is, we need to keep our open space. Wilkerson Farm was a tragedy, that it was zone changed. It should have been remained a park or something, but not density, because we already have enough density in Orem, and that's why we have so much traffic and pollution. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, David. Well done. Okay, well, I made notes, there's a couple of common themes here. Number one is growth. Number two is protecting what makes Orem great and preserving the mantra of Family City USA. And I think number three is ensuring that the city is well-run fiscally and builds community. So let's focus on growth for just a minute, and I'm just going, in any order, in fact, I'm just going to, I'm going to call out, I'm going to go backwards this time. I'm going to ask David, what, so the moratorium, the protections and the guardrails that you placed on State Street, what can State Street become in the next four years?
Well, State Street, right now, we have a thing in our State Street master plan that we need to beautify State Street, right? So if you look at Cutler's, everybody knows Cutler's, the long mown, that is the prime example of exactly what we want on State Street. We want frontage, we want grass, we want a nice sidewalk as a buffer, so it is inviting for people to come into Orem, because right now, we just have a concrete, you know, thoroughfare, and we need to make sure that we do, but the key thing is, once we beautify businesses, people will come and spend money in Orem, and that's how we generate our sales tax, and that's how we live our general fund. That's the key.
Thank you. Quinn, what of that do you agree with, and what would you do differently?
Well, certainly, people who moved to Orem always tell me that the first thing they notice is that State Street could be prettier, so I think that's a great goal. Our current zoning, I think, makes it actually quite difficult for businesses to do what they need to do to make it so that they are investing, they're renovating and meeting the current code to beautify it, so I think that we need to think through that a little bit. The one thing I would add that I think is really important, and I know some of our city staff have been thinking about this, is we really need a pedestrian-friendly space. State Street is never going to be like Center Street in Provo or a downtown that's pedestrian-friendly, but we do have places, especially around here, between Sarah Theater and Sarah Park, that can be extremely popular destinations for people to come, walk, shop, and enjoy each other's company. So I'm very interested in creating pedestrian-friendly spaces.
Okay, thank you. Linnae, what would be a comment that you have, because you've seen this from having been city councilwoman?
I haven't. I guess I'm going to just disagree with Quinn on that. We took away the State Street master plan, and what that did, it went into effect in 2017. One of the tenants of that plan that a lot of people don't know is it created this zoning where if you, if the businesses wanted to remodel more than 15%, and I think they ended up upping it to 20% because they were getting no one doing any remodeling, then they had to tear down their building and move it within eight feet of State Street. They were trying to force businesses to build high-density, commercial on the bottom, mixed use, commercial on the bottom, and then apartments on the top. That was a big loser, right? We saw nothing being improved on State Street for five years until I came in office, along with David Spencer, Mary Young, and took away the State Street master plan. We added more beautification. Raising Canes is coming to Orem on State Street and Center Street, right where the Burger King used to be. You look at that plan, it will be beautiful. Now, unfortunately, this has to happen organically. It's going to take a while. I'd like to wave my magic wand and make it happen right now, but I can guarantee you with the zoning that we've put in place, State Street will be a more beautiful place.
Thank you. Thank you. Crystal, there's this balance between managing growth while preserving and protecting the character of Orem. How would you propose to strike that balance, managing growth while preserving character?
Orem has great character, and I get the whole State Street isn't the most beautiful of streets in the state, but it is lined with small businesses. It is lined with the heart of Orem, which is the people here. So instead of it being these big corporations or your typical downtown space, State Street has character and charm all of its own because it is hundreds or thousands of small businesses that own their lands and own their building instead of big corporations owning it. I think that's part of the character of Orem, is us as a city, as a government, as a community, supporting those businesses and ensuring that they have
supporting those businesses and ensuring that they have a place here even if it doesn't look like what other businesses or, or what other cities have. So let's keep, let's continue to support those businesses, and as we support them, the beautification will come. We can make that happen.
Okay, very good, thank you. So Angela, I didn't mention in my opening statement that I live in Spanish Fork, but I was just thinking, I, I drive to Orem to get my hair cut. I've got a great referral for you for that. I drive to Orem to get my tools sharpened, you mentioned the business, and my favorite restaurant is in Orem. So tell me Angela, what, what about small business and ensuring the ecosystem of that precious asset stays vibrant and remains true to the character of Orem? How will you advocate for small business?
So I think we need to, like everyone else has been saying, we need to definitely focus on the small business. I'd much rather see State Street, you know, just dotted with the small businesses that have character, they have a niche clientele, something that is just unique to, to Orem. And making sure that we are supporting them, that we have the right policies in place to keep them profitable, and to keep them there. And, and honestly, I, I think the way Orem State Street looks is kind of part of its charm right now. You know, it's, it's the way we've always seen there, and we'd all like to see it a little bit more beautiful, but at the same time, I'm, I would rather make sure that we're profitable here, that we are getting the sales tax in, and that with the type, the type, the right type of businesses along State Street versus making it look better.
Okay, thank you. So Doyle, you've lived in this community how many years?
Forty-six.
I see your name on the, on the plaques at the chamber. Did you serve on, on our board or?
I did.
At one time? So you know what it would, what it means to really advocate for good policy for the business community. Does Orem need good policy? Does it, does it need better policy for the small business?
I'll tell you what. Kathy Lewis and Orem's Economic Development Program is really fantastic. They're doing some wonderful, wonderful things for business. A lot of in-service training for small beginning businesses. They're doing a tremendous outreach to businesses and asking them, what more do you need from Orem City? What more do you need from others? She has a passion for business and for what Orem needs. And that's why I said, I think that's one place where I can really help. With my business background and having been in business all these years, I can work there to continue to help businesses to grow. And we do need to continue to be strong in our efforts to have good retail business and better retail business all the time. But small business, yes, that's a function, and it's important, but we can find balance. And Orem's on the way. I can just help.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, very good. I want to, I want to pivot a little bit about, or towards the, the question around funding revenues for the city. Did I hear correctly that the two greatest revenue sources are the mall? And what was the second?
Mall and 13th South.
And 13th South?
University Parkway.
So University Parkway. As the city, this question back to David, as the city faces future funding needs, what solutions would you pursue to balance the budget and fund essential services? Money's a big part of making sure that a city is ran effectively, but the effective management of that money is as important, if not more?
Correct. I think as a city, our executive staff is excellent, they're top-notch. But the, the question is, Curtis, is, over the past four years, we've had 3,000 new businesses come to Orem. Why? Because we are the center of Utah County, right? We have the mall, we have Trader Joe's, we have Cheesecake Factory, huge. So those anchors, RC Willie also, we have those anchors, they will grow, as they grow, and we, if we keep adding businesses like we have, we're very business-friendly, and we will keep moving forward. I think Orem is a, is a destination. It's just like, it's a destination for our police and fire. We have applicants, 60, 70, 80 people applying for one job because Orem is a destination.
Thank you. So Crystal, looking from the outside in, and again, I mentioned that I'm a, I'm a patron, but I don't know what it's like to be, to live in the city and to see your taxpayer dollars at work. Does, does Orem, is Orem looking at a potential issue with funding? Or is Orem in a healthy place from your perspective?
I believe Orem is in a very healthy place. I think the current administration has done a very good job of finding creative ways to meet the funding needs. We just built a new city center with no bonding, no new taxes. The Hillcrest Park, no bonding, no taxes, to complete a lot, a lot of these projects. Along with that, they have hired, the city hired a grant writer that is bringing in funding through no strings attached grants to pay for some of the things that our city needs. So instead of, a lot of the times, government says, we need to do this, what's the only answer to solve this problem? Let's raise your taxes. And Orem has avoided doing that. You haven't had a property tax increase in years. And so by thinking outside of the box and doing responsible projects, Orem's done a great job of being a good steward of your tax dollars, and I look forward to being able to be a part of that and maintaining that level of service for the citizens of Orem.
Okay, thank you. Angela, a question for you about essential services, and you mentioned your schoolteacher.
Yes.
By the way, I got to watch all of your Meet the Candidate nights. I went back and watched the video, and you did a fabulous job, so I know a little bit about your background, but what, what essential services in Orem maybe need more attention? From a funding perspective and maybe a citizen volunteer perspective, what essential services are not quite being met in Orem?
To be honest, I'm not sure. There's, I think we're doing a great job in Orem, as I talk with the city leaders and as I meet with people. We have the most amazing fire department and police department here. I'm sure there's areas where we could improve, but I'm not aware of any right now, and that's something that I'd be interested in looking at, you know, and what can we do there? What I've been really impressed with though is the staff and how amazing they are at managing their finances and staying within budget or even being below budget. And being able to hire the right people to be in charge of those jobs has been a real benefit to Orem, where I was just looking at some of our utilities that we have, and we have some of the lowest utilities in the state. And that is because we have amazing teams in place that are able to be creative, think outside the box, and, and serve the citizens of Orem in a fiscally responsible way.
Okay, thank you for that. So Quinn, let me ask you, I mean, do, from your perspective, are there any essential services that need more attention, whether fiscally or from volunteerism?
Sure. We, we do a lot with a very low tax rate. Where I hear residents having concerns, it has a lot to do with managing and regulating what's happening in our neighborhoods, whether it be with short-term rentals that are causing a lot of challenges for particular neighborhoods, whether it be cars that are parked on the street because they're violating our policies on accessory dwelling units. So we do have a lot of concerns still about maintaining and enforcing the regulations that we have. So I think whether it be through our neighborhood volunteers or through our, our other city staff, we really do need more enforcement for some of those regulations.
Okay, thank you. And then Doyle, take us home on this question. In your time here in Orem, you have probably seen the evolution of our first responders and the tech, how technology has enhanced their work. There are better tools for communication and, and response. What's the status of our first responders situation here? Do you, do you feel they're well-taken care of in Orem?
So I'll tell you, Orem can be very proud of the fact that they've worked very hard to bring the pay level of our first responders back up to a competitive level. Over the last few years, we lost a lot of our first responders to other cities because of pay. Because they don't get paid a lot, that's for sure. Now, the situation being, as they've brought that pay back up and made it competitive, many have actually returned to Orem City because they love working for Orem City. But we are still, in my opinion, understaffed. We still have more that could be done to protect Orem, and that's really important for us. Also, you mentioned technology.
Yes.
There's so many wonderful things we can do with videos, video surveillance and other things to protect neighborhoods and to encourage others to reach out and participate in protecting our neighborhoods and assist our first responders in that with citizen involvement.
Okay, wow, right on the dot. And thank you Doyle for that response. This next question comes from a resident, and they ask, how do you feel about the enforcement of noise ordinances, beautification standards, and other quality of life standards? Quinn, what, what do you think this resident is getting at with that question? I'll repeat it again. How do you feel about the enforcement of noise ordinances, beautification standards, and other quality of life resident, uh, standards? What's that, what's that resident trying to get to?
It's a common concern, and it is tied to my previous comment about enforcement of some of our existing regulations. We have made some development decisions in Orem that have led to extremely noisy neighborhoods through car washes and other places where we haven't done adequate soundproofing. We have places with light pollution from billboards and other things that are diminishing our quality of life. And we, I've had residents tell me that we also have a lot of traffic noise in certain places, and so we don't have sufficient buffers for some of that, that traffic noise. So I, I think as a champion of our quality of life, we need to take noise pollution, light pollution, and violation of our, our residential standards very seriously.
So how would you go about doing that? I'm going to extend the time for another 30 seconds. How would you go about making that happen?
It starts with zoning regulations for new developments. Some of those have already passed, so we, we already have some developments that have been approved that have caused these externalities toward our neighborhoods. I think there are opportunities for the city to really understand the needs of those residents and to negotiate and work with those businesses, potentially a public-private partnership, to do better job of protecting those neighborhoods from that noise.
Thank you. Crystal, do you see it that way? What are your thoughts?
I think that there's a lot we can do to better support our neighborhoods and ensure that we have that good quality of life. We have a great neighborhood improvement team, and we maybe need to hire more people in that department to take care of some of these ordinance violations that are happening. And I think that we need to empower the residents to, to tell us when there are things that are going on that, that aren't, aren't okay, that are bringing down the standard of living. The city doesn't know what it doesn't know. And so if you're sitting in your house or in your neighborhood and you just keep thinking that one house, that's yard has not been mowed all summer long and it's a fire hazard, what do I do about it? Call the city. The city has the connect, I think it's citizenconnect.Orem, you can find it on the city website. But it's a way where you can report some of those issues and things to the city so that we can get the neighborhood improvement teams and other, the police, or whoever needs to be involved with addressing some issues and give the citizens that power back.
Okay, thank you. So the last time, I had a question that I wanted to defer back to the incumbents, I asked Lanay. So this time I'm going to ask David. David, tell us what you think this resident is getting at about the enforcement of noise ordinances, beautification standards, and other quality of life standards?
Well, Curtis, I met with Carrie and Linda Downs, they live right behind ShopCo. So on the city council, that's why I like being on, is citizens call me and we get things done. So I met with them, we met with our knit team, also Officer Jameson, he goes around there every morning at 5:30 and make sure, because their problem is with tractor supply, they have unloading in the back, and she's very sensitive to her lungs with a smell of ammonia or whatever, or fertilizer. So, and also the noise, and then also the light pollution. So we've been working on that probably for two to three months, and I think we solved the problem in that we are monitoring it, we are taking it seriously, and her needs are different than other people's needs. So we need to make sure that we are looking at their, their needs. So with ShopCo moving out and tractor supply, and, and our, our police force and our neighborhood improvement team, they are making a difference with lawns and, and keeping neighborhoods safe. So I think we, we take it seriously, and that's why we meet with them. I mean, it's been hours and hours I spent time, and that's, that's what I do, right? Because I represent the citizens of Orem.
Okay, thank you. Well, that concludes the debate portion. So with your blessing, let's move into the closing statements. And Angela, I thought we'd have you lead out, is that okay? Will you lead us out with your closing statement? Minute thirty.
Thank you. Okay, so again, I'm Angela Moulton, and I am not a politician. I'm a teacher who has learned to work with all kinds of people. And this experience has shaped my leadership style, grounded, practical, and focused on understanding before making decisions. On the city council, I will work for you. I do not have any personal agenda. My only goal is to serve the citizens of Orem and to make sure that we are providing a wonderful place to raise our families. I understand that leadership isn't about pushing a personal agenda. First of all, I will prioritize owner-occupied housing that helps families build equity and invest in neighborhoods. I will work to preserve our open spaces so that we can continue to enjoy the beauty Orem has to offer. One thing I love about driving down State Street is seeing that gorgeous view of the mountains up there, and one thing I don't want is that blocked. So that's something that's, that's very important to me. Also, one of my agendas is making sure, well, not my agenda, but one of my purposes is to make sure that we develop a way to seek input from all of our residents before voting. We all have a different life experience that has shaped our views, and it's so important that as leaders that we listen to everyone's point of view, especially ones that are different from us, and that we actually understand where they're coming from and how decisions are going to affect them. We need to also make sure that our residents are respected and that they know that their voices have been heard. Again, I'm Angela Moulton, and I'm asking for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you Angela. Okay, Doyle, will you lead out next?
Sure, thank you very much. You know, there's a few things we didn't get time to address tonight that I think are really, really critical. There's been a discussion over the last many, many years as to whether Orem should be like Provo and have a full-time mayor, and those kinds of things. I would like to go on record saying I don't believe that it's time for a full-time mayor. It would cost us about a million dollars just to implement that kind of thing. And it's important for us to have the kind of people that can spend the time that our current people are spending and that I could spend as a full-time retired person, I could spend full-time helping, and that's important for our city. We are extended. It's hard. Orem City is doing such a great job with the money they have, but they're extended, and it's making it hard to plan for the future in some of the utility areas, transportation and other areas that we need to long-term plan for. With my background, I can help us look at essential services, still provide those for the city, and yet build for the future and protect our future. And I will work for you.
Okay, thank you Doyle. Okay. We're going to go to Crystal, then Lanay, then Quinn, and then David.
I am in a different position than I think everybody else up on this stage and anybody that's currently on the council. I think I'm the youngest person here and would be the youngest person that would be on the council, and I think that that's a needed perspective. I still have my kids all at home with me, we're in the thick of life, and being family city USA, having the family perspective of what it's like to be doing all of the things and raising your kids, having that perspective is, is valued and needed on our city council. The people we have have been doing a great job, don't get me wrong, I'm not trying to criticize them, but I think that we have room for more perspectives instead of the same, the same voices. Doyle has lived in Orem longer than I've been alive, so there is that. It's just we're in different phases of life and different perspectives. All are great, but we need to make sure that we have a variety of perspectives on the council. I have the time and the energy to devote to this job to make sure that you are being represented well. And I love our community, we live in an awesome place. We have the mountains right there, we have such community values. We just had the taste of Orem here. What an amazing festival. Let's keep the momentum going of the amazing things that we have going on in this city and, and bring in that life and perspective of our younger families and what they need. My name's Crystal Muehlstein, and I ask for your support. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, Crystal. Lanay's next.
Okay, I was like, did you say me? Just wanted to make sure. So I'm Lanay Millet, and I'm running for my second term on the Orem City Council, and it has truly been a privilege. it has truly been a privilege to serve you and to just really continue that service. That's why I'm running again. I'm excited to keep the good things going that are going together. We've accomplished some great things. We brought back Family City USA, and we determined that that is defined as our mission statement of creating an environment where families will thrive. Every decision I make is based on that benchmark. I am here to serve our families. We brought our motto of in God, we trust only the second city in Utah to do that, so we can show that, that that's one of the things, one of our guiding principles here in Orem. A big part is our transportation, our traffic. Everybody complains about the traffic. We took away, UDOT had plans to widen several streets in Orem to five lanes, East 1600 North, 8th East, 12th North, 800 South, 800 West. We pulled those away and we said, UDOT, we're not going to be your through city. You need to find some other solutions. And at first, I'll be honest, they were a little, they gave us a little pushback, but they're working with us now, and we're working to improve the off-ramp at PG and to hopefully get an off-ramp in Provo. So good things, working with great partners. We are in a great financial position. I am going to disagree with some of the statements that have been made tonight. And one of the things that we are doing just fabulously is we created a strategy and innovation team. They have brought in millions of dollars of grants. We've had Mary Young and Brimby, our city manager, go back to Washington and establish great relationships there and get grants for our upgrade of our water treatment plant. So much transparency. I could go on forever. I wish we would have had more time to talk about the great things.
Thank you.
I'm Lanay Millet, and I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Quinn?
I just want to say how, how awesome I think it is that you would come here and dedicate your time and energy to being with us tonight and to imagining with us on this stage the potential and the future of our city. We really need a vision for who we want to become, and I want you to know that I know that our futures, yours and mine, are deeply intertwined. I bring distinctive professional experience. My entire personal and professional life has been dedicated to building strong communities and to ensuring we have good government. If you, like me, have concerns about the trajectory of Orem's political culture and direction, I ask for your support. If you, like me, believe that we sometimes have developed in ways that are inconsistent with our community values, if you're worried about traffic, light, noise, and air pollution, if you value green and open spaces and safe places to interact with one another in our neighborhoods, I ask for your support. If you're worried about polarizing politics and want someone to represent you who's committed to integrity, transparency, to an independent perspective, to always listening to both sides of the story and to building trust and compassion in our shared community that is grieving, I ask for your support. I believe that my community service background makes me particularly well-positioned to help reset our city's trajectory. I'm here because I believe in public service. I promise never to make it about me or to take myself too seriously, but because your future and mine are indeed intertwined, I pledge to be relentless in the pursuit of a distinctive vision for who we can be and the kind of life we can provide for everyone in this place we call home. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Quinn. David?
Okay, over the years, I've tried to solve real problems and make a positive impact. Whether it is installing stop signs where children walk to school, helping a family get their orchard property back from the city, or getting a dangerous blind intersection fixed, I show up, I listen, I follow through, and I'm a doer, and I like to get things done. I led the effort to put the moratorium on State Street master plan that would have added 10,000 high-density apartments up and down State Street. While serving on the city council, I protected the integrity and character of our neighborhoods to preserve the quality of life that makes Orem feel like home. Over the years, we have completed several community projects, the Altogether Playground, the Hillcrest Park, the Lakeside Sports Park. Recently, we've been working on two major projects, the $37 million debt-free city center, a new 10 million gallon water tank without raising taxes, without raising taxes. That is physical responsibility. That's what it looks like. I believe in small, effective government that focuses on basics, police, fire, water, roads, and sewer, and is welcoming to all families and businesses. I am working to make sure Orem is a great place to live, where families and businesses can thrive. My main concern in this election for Orem is to keep high-density off of State Street and to continue, continue to protect our neighborhoods. Since Orem is 95% built out, we need to keep our open space, period. I am endorsed by the police, fire, and the Utah County Republican Party. I am David Spencer, and I humbly ask for your continued support and vote so we can keep Orem moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. So well done. I have just three thoughts in conclusion. First off, I could not agree more with your statement about Kathy Lewis. She partners with the chamber in marvelous and miraculous ways. She is making a difference with the Orem Business Alliance, so thank you for sharing her with the chamber. Number two, I failed to mention the dignitaries that are in the auditorium tonight. I thought I saw Mary Young. I imagine he's here, and there might be others, including Tom McDonald, who's served on city council. You'd be surprised, we can hardly see any of you, so whatever gestures you were making, we didn't see him. But, and there might be others that I missed that, that, that we want to say thank you for your service. And then the third piece is, is just extend one more time, a round of applause, this group of people to come forward with their thoughts, their ideas, their vision, and to put themselves out there says a lot, and I just think it upholds the very best of what makes America truly the land of the free. A round of applause to these great candidates. And don't tell the Spanish Fork Chamber of Commerce where I go get a haircut, have my meals, and get my tools. We're going to take, we're going to take about a seven-minute break, and we'll get the next team up here, and stretch your legs. We'll be back on about five after the hour. Thank you.